Good afternoon. We will now call our city council work session to order. Our first order of business would be the presentation of the fiscal year 2021, 2022, operating and capital budget. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. In front of you at your dais, you should have a copy of the proposed FY 2021, 2022, operating and capital budget. This budget, of course, has been being assembled over the last several months. I appreciate staff's efforts in this. And at this time, I will call the Director of Finance, Tealyn Hanson, to the podium to present to you what's inclusive within this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. It is my pleasure today to be here to present to you the city manager's proposed budget for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022 for the operating and capital budget. With that, we'll get right into it. So when we develop a budget every year, we set certain priorities and goals as it relates to the budget. And these are the priorities and goals that we kept in our minds as we went through the budget process this year. And they are to maintain and enhance service levels to our citizens with no tax increase, to provide for the protection of human health and safety, to invest in our public education systems, to provide for employee compensation and critical personnel resources within our city workforce, provide for quality of life enhancements through our CIP and capital projects, as well as last listed here, but certainly not least, maintain compliance with all of our financial policies. In addition to these and not listed here, you will hear me say a number of times in this presentation that this budget addresses the needs, these priorities and needs for fiscal '21, as well as sets the city up very well for moving into the future as we move into fiscal '23 and beyond. Before we get into how the budget addresses each one of those priorities, though, I'm going to take just a brief moment and talk about the budget document itself. What you have in front of you is a binder with the entirety of the proposed budget itself in it. The budget structure covers all 17 of the operating and capital funds of the city. The total of all of those funds budgeted is $698,395, and I will show you a breakdown of the funds in just a moment. Each, the budget document itself, contains an executive summary with highlights of each one of the funds. It contains line item detail for all the funds and all of the departments throughout the city. And it also contains several appendix that contain supplemental information, including a personnel summary by department, statistical information, graphs and trends, a summary of our reserve balances, our financial policy compliance summary, and our proposed budget-related ordinances. This document will also be available, and I'll mention this towards the end of the presentation. This document in its entirety will be available both online for our citizens to review, as well as several places throughout the city. And again, at the end of the presentation, I will lay out where those documents are for the opportunity for citizens to go through it. So as I mentioned, I would show you a slide with the breakdown of the total budgets per fund. There's that $698 million total budget for all the funds listed there. And you can see that we've got the general fund, our capital projects funds, our debt service funds, all of our special revenue funds, our internal service funds, as well as our enterprise or business utility funds, as well as the schools fund. As you are aware, we are required to show the entirety of the school's total budget in the city budget as well, so that is included in that number as well. So now we'll move into those budget priorities and how we feel that this proposed budget addresses each one of those priorities. The first one being maintaining and enhancing service levels with no real estate tax rate increase. So we are not proposing a real estate tax rate increase. The rate will remain static at $1.11 per $100 of assessed value. We are also not proposing any rate increases to the two special taxing districts, so the rates will remain static at 10 and 1/2 cents for the downtown business overlay district and at 24 cents for the Route 17 taxing district. We do maintain the third lowest tax rate in the region, and this budget continues for us to maintain that as we have been for the last several years. I think this is my seventh budget that I put together, assisted in putting together for the city, and I think we've been the third lowest since before I started being involved in the budget. Protection of human health and safety. This is where we get into talking about how this budget sets us up for the future. As you're aware, we are in the process of a capital project to place a new fire station up in the College Drive area of the city. The construction for that station will take place during fiscal year '22, and we anticipate the opening of that station in the fall of fiscal '20, or fall of calendar year '22, which will be fiscal year '23. However, in the current, in the fiscal '22 proposed budget, we are proposing the addition of 18 firefighters, which would be Phase 1 for hiring of the staff in order to staff that station. We have nine months' worth of funding built into this budget to hire and appropriately train those staff, so that by the time the station is open, those staff will be ready to man that station. In addition, looking forward to fiscal '23, we will include in that budget another 18 firefighter positions in order to fully man that station going forward for fiscal '23 and beyond. Additionally, we have proposed increased funding to some of our community health partners to meet the requests that they gave us, and so we have additional funding for the Suffolk Health Department, the Western Tidewater Community Services Board, and the Western Tidewater Free Clinic in the amounts that are listed on the screen. As it relates to our investment in public education, this budget does propose a $3 million increase to the local operating support for schools. This does fully fund what the schools has asked the city for as it relates to their operating funds to the tune of $65.3 million. Included in the budget, but not included in the school portion of the budget, is also three, almost $3.6 million worth of capital improvements to the schools as it relates to their major systems, repairs and replacements, line items. And included in the city's debt service budget is $10 and 1/2 million that goes towards debt service related to new school facilities that have come online in the last 15 years or so. The chart there at the bottom shows the operational support from the city side of things for the schools in the last 10 years, and you can see that it has increased from $46.7 million back in fiscal year '13 to a proposed $65.3 million in fiscal year '22. Addressing employee compensation and critical personnel resources as it relates to the city workforce, there is built into this budget a proposed 2 and 1/2% cost of living increase, effective July 1st for all city employees, constitutional offices, council appointees, as well as grant employees. And in addition to that, this budget includes a proposed 47 new full-time positions to address new facilities growth and service demand. As I mentioned earlier, there is nine months' worth of funding built into this budget to add an additional 18 firefighter positions for the new College Drive Fire Station. There are also six months' worth of funding to add seven new full-time positions in Parks and Recreation, as we anticipate the Venice Creek Rec Center coming online within, for the last six months of this fiscal year proposed budget. That takes up 25 of those new positions, of those new 47 positions. The remaining 22 are spread across a wide variety of departments, and they are really to address the increase in population in the city and in order for us to continue to provide effective and efficient services to our citizens and our internal customers. We believe that these positions are necessary in order to continue to provide the level of service that we do and enhance in some areas. This chart gives you some perspective on the number of staffing per capita. So the bar graph there represents the growth in the city population over the last 10 years, and the blue line represents the per capita staffing. So for every 1,000 citizens, in fiscal year '13, we had approximately 15 point, looks like about 15.4 employees per 1,000 citizens. You can see that with this proposed budget for fiscal year '22, we are maintaining at about 15.3 employees per 1,000 citizens. And in looking throughout the region, this, we maintain, I believe, the second lowest staffing ratio as it relates to per capita staffing. The last point we want to make about employee compensation and critical personnel resources is you will see increased funding in the budget related to overtime and part-time funding for both the fire department, police department, as well as Parks and Recreation. These are two, this is, the reasons for this are twofold. One is to address the new station, the new facilities that are going to come online in fiscal year '22 and beyond, as well as we have been relying on a strategy for a number of years to rely on savings and other line items in order to fully fund the actual expenses as it relates to overtime and part-time funding in some of these departments, and this gets us truer to actual. Moving into quality of life enhancements, this really gets into our CIP. So the CIP that the city council approved a couple of months ago, we have included the entire, all of the year-one projects and funding as it was proposed and approved in the CIP into the capital budget for the city. So that gets to our quality of life enhancements. We are anticipating about, we are anticipating $30 million worth of bond issuance in order to cover those general capital projects. We do anticipate $5.6 million worth of capital PGO, so this is our cash funding towards our capital projects, so that we're balancing cash and bond funding. These projects include a number of things throughout the city, including addressing public safety with the addition of the College Drive Fire Station. We've included ambulance and fire apparatus replacements, as well as a CAD system replacement for our public safety departments. Our public buildings and facilities, we've included funding for the Central Library, as well as the Human Resources building renovation to move the school's administration office into that building. Parks and Recreation, a number of projects, including water access to the Nansman River, as well as some projects at Lone Star Lakes and the Cedar Hill Slope stabilization at the Cedar Hill Cemetery. A number of transportation projects that you're all familiar with, some intersection projects that are listed here, including Nansman Parkway and Wilroy Road flyover, Route 17 and Crittendon Road intersection, Nansman Parkway and Bennett's pasture road intersection, as well as Route 58 and Manning Bridge Road intersection. We've addressed village and neighborhood improvements, downtown plan improvements, as well as open space funding in the capital improvements project and the capital budget, as well as citywide and other drainage improvement projects in our stormwater fund and water and sewer infrastructure projects in our public utilities fund. As it, the last of the priorities was compliance with financial policy, certainly not the least of the priorities, but we do, this proposed budget does exceed or meet all of our financial policies as they are approved by city council, including exceeding our 3% of capital PGO by just a little bit, getting it to 3.1%. Our debt as a percentage of assessed value, this is our total debt as a percent of our total assessed value throughout the city. The policy requires that it be less than 4%, and we are achieving 1.9% with this budget. The debt service as a percent of general government expenditures is required to be less than 10%. This is our annual debt payments need to be less than 10% of our general government expenditures. We're decreasing it with this budget to 7.3, and our unassigned fund balance by policy needs to be more than 15%. And with the projected surpluses that we're going to, that we anticipate seeing for fiscal year '21, we will be exceeding that by, up to 22 and 1/2%. So we'll get into the specific funds, starting with the general fund, and we'll talk about some highlights in each one of those funds. This is a snapshot showing the revenue types that we see in the general fund and the fiscal '21 budget compared to what we're recommending or proposing in the fiscal '22 budget. And you can see that the total revenue for the general fund is anticipated to be $237,816,531. This is a 5.6% increase over the fiscal '21 budget. We'll get into the detail of some of those revenue changes in the next several slides. So general property taxes, we are anticipating about a 7% increase in our general property taxes. This includes the real estate increase of approximately 6% or $7.1 million, as well as an increase in personal property by about 10% or equates to about $2.4 million. As the assessor reported to you at your last meeting, we do see a reassessment value increase, as well as an increase due to new construction, and we'll talk a little bit later in next steps, but the reassessment value increase being more than 1% does require an additional public hearing, and we'll talk about the details of that towards the end of the presentation. Other local taxes, we're seeing an increase of overall about 6% or equating to about $2.6 million. The big winner here is sales and use tax. Fiscal year '21 is the first year that we have been able to collect and get a real handle on internet sales tax and knowing what that's going to be. So we did not build that into fiscal '21. If you'll also remember fiscal '21, we were developing the budget in a period of great unknowns with the pandemic and the beginning of that back in March of last year. So we see these year-over-year budget increases as we've gone through a year of this pandemic, as we've gone through a year of collecting sales and use tax on internet sales. This is where we project that we're going to be for fiscal year '22. So we do anticipate about a 19% increase in sales and use tax. Lodging, we are seeing about a 40% increase year-over-year, and that's equates to about $400,000. Recordation tax is up about $400,000. Meals tax is up from the fiscal year '21 budget by about $200,000, as well as motor vehicle license to the tune of about $100,000. We are seeing some decreases in communication sales tax. This is the tax on your landline phone, so as people get rid of their landlines and just rely on their cellphones for communication devices, we're seeing a nationwide decrease in this type of a tax. Admissions tax, we're also seeing a significant decrease in, as this is revenue that is collected from the movie theaters predominantly. Some of our other revenue sources, we're also projecting increases in our state and federal revenue, our permits and privilege fees, as well as some of our charges for services, and we are anticipating about a $332,000 decrease to our miscellaneous or recovered cost. What this equates to is really the cost of doing business, as we have gone mostly virtual with the advent of the pandemic a year ago, and the city council very wisely decided to suspend the credit card convenience fees in order to collect revenue via using, people using credit cards online. This is the reduction in revenue that we're going to see this budget proposes to make that a permanent thing, that that fee goes away. As you're aware, this, our budget is required to be balanced. So these are our functional categories of expenditures in the general fund and where we anticipate seeing the fiscal '21 budget compared to what is proposed in the fiscal '22 budget. So that $237.8 million is the same as you saw on the revenue slide. The 5.6% growth is the same you saw on the revenue side. This breaks it down by functional category, and we'll get into some of the highlights of what's driving these increases in the next several slides. But first, we always like to show you the tax dollar for city services, so that for every dollar we collect in taxes, this is how the expenditures break out. So education and the related debt is approximately 32 cents of every tax dollar. Public safety is approximately 30 cents. It goes down to 7 cents for debt service and our health and welfare, 5 cents for general government expenditures, as well as Parks and Recreation, 4 cents for our judicial functions, community development and public works, 3 cents each, and capital PGO at 2 cents, and then at 1 cent for our non-departmental and our local and regional organization. Those, now we'll get into, as I mentioned, the primary drivers of what is driving the increases in the expenditure side of the house. So personnel and benefits, of course, is a big driver. It's up about $6.5 million. We've talked about some of the reasons why this is. We're adding 25 FTEs for the new facilities that are going to be coming online. We're adding 15 new FTEs for support positions throughout the general fund. I know that this slide earlier said 22, and so not to be confused, of that 22, not all of those 22 are in the general fund, so 15 of those 22 are in the general fund. We are proposing a 2 and 1/2% cost of living adjustment, as well as increasing part-time and overtime funding in the areas where that's needed, primarily public safety and Parks and Recreation. Another increase is the $3 million additional support for Suffolk Public Schools to fully fund their request. We're seeing an increase effect in the general fund as it relates to increases in the Information Technology Fund, as that is an internal service fund, so all of the costs need to be spread out to the departments that they serve, and that's primarily due to increases in maintenance service contracts, as well as debt, an increase in debt service in that fund. We've got about $400,000 increase in health and welfare related to foster care, as well as the increased funding to the Western Tidewater Community Services Board and the Health Department, and we have an increase of about $400,000 to our capital PGO. As the budget grows, naturally, the amount that we are required by policy to contribute toward cash-funded capital grows as well, and this is a function of that. We're seeing about a $200,000 increase in some of our other operating expenses as it relates to maintenance contracts, repairs and maintenance. There is funding in here for a comprehensive plan update, as well as a compensation study. With that, we'll move into some of our other funds, starting with our special revenue funds. The downtown business overlay district, their budget remains flat at $174,091, and again, there's no change in the proposed tax rate for that. And that fund continues to provide enhanced street sweeping and refuse collection and landscaping services in the downtown area. The Route 17 Special Taxing District provides for funding for debt service of transportation improvements in the taxing district and provides for reserve for future capital projects within that district. That budget also remains flat at 1.0, almost $2 million, and again, there's no proposed tax rate change in that fund. The Aviation Facilities Fund shows a slight increase of about 2% due to increased operating costs of the Suffolk Executive Airport, and it does require $109,000 transfer from the general fund. Road maintenance, we're seeing approximately a 3% increase. The total budget there is just under $29.8 million. We're seeing an increase of approximately $670,000, increased state funding to provide for an additional 12.4 lane miles that were added into the system, as well as using approximately $2.7 million from fund, fund balance to provide for some equipment purchases and transfers to the capital projects fund. The transit system is up approximately 26%. The total budget is about $2.4 million. There's increased state and federal operating and capital assistance to the tune of about $292,000 in that fund, and we are also included in that fund is preliminary planning for a new transit operations facility. Consolidated Grants Fund remains flat. The funding in this fund of about $660,000 is to provide for local match, local matching funds in order to be able to apply for grants and leverage our state and federal partners. As we receive grants, we have local money to put forth to leverage and get those grants. The Law Library Fund is up approximately 15%. The total budget there is just under $49,000, and it provides for the operating costs of the Law Library at the Godwin's Court, Godwin Courts Building. Moving forward into our enterprise funds, our refuse fund is up approximately 4%. The total budget there is just under $10.7 million. We are not proposing a rate increase to the refuse fund. That fee will remain stable at $25.25 per month. We will maintain our current service levels, but we will also be addressing increased SIPSA disposal costs that are being passed on to us from SIPSA. We do see a slight reduction in our host fee revenue, and so we are using a little bit of fund balance here to stabilize that rate during fiscal '22 as, as we anticipate additional increases from SIPSA in the coming years. The stormwater fund, you had a presentation at your last meeting regarding the uses and the moving forward with the stormwater management fund. We do see an increase in that fund. The total budget is about $7.9 million, and we are proposing a $1.50 per month, per ERU rate increase in the stormwater fund to take the rate from $6 to $7.50. What that does, and as I mentioned at the presentation that was given a couple, at your last meeting, related to the stormwater fund, is we were looking for a strategy of how to best move forward to balance the appropriate mix of cash versus debt funding and be able to avoid, afford the debt service in this fund in order to accomplish all of those projects that you're aware are needed in the stormwater fund with drainage issues throughout the city. And this is the, this is where we believe that the rate needs to be that will, will get us through the five years of the CIP. Finally, for our enterprise funds, we're going to talk about our public utilities fund. That is up about 17%, and the total budget here is $71.2 million. The primary driver of the increase in this fund is actually using cash reserves to fund the capital projects. When we presented the capital projects, the CIP to you back in January and February, we were proposing, I think, about $7 million worth of cash funding to, to the capital projects, and the remaining was going to be debts, we were going to issue debt. We took a look at the reserves and everything, and we, we are proposing now the entire year one of the capital projects for the utility enterprise fund to be funded with cash, so there will be no debt issuance in the current year. What this also does is address increases in our bulk water contract with the cities of Norfolk and Portsmouth, and those are the driver, those are the primary drivers of why there's an increase in the public utilities fund. What this means is that we are proposing a 5.4% combined water and sewer bill rate increase for the average customer will see about $5.20 per month additional. I will take this opportunity to remind you that we were able to, in fiscal year '21, mitigate any rate increases through debt service savings with the refundings, and if we look back to what happened in fiscal year '20, we did not increase the consumption rate in fiscal year '20 either. There was a rate increase of $1.25 per month for the meter service charge. So this is the first time in, in the last, this will be the third year, but it'll be the first time that we have to increase the consumption rates related to these driving forces that are causing the increase in the fund. Moving forward into our internal service funds, we have our information technology fund, and we are seeing a 20% increase in this fund. The total budget is right above $13.8 million. What this does is provide for all the technology services for all city departments and and the moving forward with the Stormwater Management Fund. We do see an increase in that fund. The total budget is about $7.9 million, and we are proposing a $1.50 per month, per ERU rate increase in the Stormwater Fund to take the rate from $6 to $7.50. What that does, and as I mentioned at the presentation that was given a couple, at your last meeting, related to the Stormwater Fund, is we were looking for a strategy of how to best move forward to balance the appropriate mix of cash versus debt funding and be able to avoid, afford the debt service in this fund in order to accomplish all of those projects that you're aware are needed in the Stormwater Fund with drainage issues throughout the city. And this is the, this is where we believe that the rate needs to be that will, will get us through the five years of the CIP. Finally, for our enterprise funds, we're going to talk about our Public Utilities Fund. That is up about 17%. And the total budget here is $71.2 million. The primary driver of the increase in this fund is actually using cash reserves to fund the capital projects. When we presented the capital projects, the CIP to you back in January and February, we were proposing, I think, about $7 million with the cash funding to, to the capital projects, and the remaining was going to be debts, we were going to issue debt. We took a look at the reserves and everything, and we, we are proposing now the entire year one of the capital projects for the utility enterprise fund to be funded with cash, so there will be no debt issuance in the current year. What this also does is address increases in our bulk water contract with the cities of Norfolk and Portsmouth. And those are the driver, those are the primary drivers of why there's an increase in the Public Utilities Fund. What this means is that we are proposing a 5.4% combined water and sewer bill rate increase for the average customer will see about $5.20 per month additional. I, I will take this opportunity to remind you that we were able to, in fiscal year 21, mitigate any rate increases through debt service savings with the refundings. And if we look back to what happened in fiscal year 20, we did not increase the consumption rate in fiscal year 20 either. There was a rate increase of $1.25 per month for the meter service charge. So this is the first time in, in the last, this will be the third year, but it'll be the first time that we have to increase the consumption rates related to these driving forces that are causing the increase in the fund. Moving forward into our internal service funds, we have our information technology fund, and we are seeing a 20% increase in this fund. The total budget is right above $13.8 million. What this does is provide for all the technology services for all city departments, including computers, software, the data communications, networking, and security. We are seeing approximately a $1.3 million increase in our maintenance service contracts, and we are also seeing an $823,000 increase in debt service as we have issued short-term debt in the last couple of years to fund radio purchases, as well as some other issuances and purchases that were needed in that fund. In the fleet management fund, we're actually seeing a 9% decrease in fleet management. The total budget here is just under $14 million, but this does allow us to replace some critical fleet equipment that is getting to its end of life using $2 million from the fleet fund balance. Risk management, we're also seeing a decrease in our risk management fund. The total budget here will be just at $19.6 million. And this fund provides for workers' compensation, Public Safety Line of Duty Act, health insurance, and property and casualty insurance for all city departments and all our funds. We will continue 80% employer contribution to our health insurance premium. We will also continue to maintain compliance with our 20% risk stabilization reserve policy requirement. It also continues to fully fund our, our other post-employment benefit obligations through a combined mix of $729,000 with cash contributions to the OPEB trust fund, as well as what we call pay-as-you-go claims, as we pay the claims as we move forward. We are using approximately $3.4 million of the risk fund balance to provide credit savings through all the other departments, and that's a true-up of, of the risk charges for the last year. The debt service fund is down about 1%. The total debt service fund is just under, just a hair under $29.4 million. This fund provides for the annual debt service for all of our general government, schools, Route 7, and Route 17 Special Taxing District debt. It does include debt service on the new general obligation bonds that we are proposing to be, to be issued to fund the first year of the CIP. So the 1% decrease is a net decrease, and the reason we are able to add new debt service and still have a decrease is because of the refundings that we undertook in the fall of last year that were, that allowed us to have a significant savings. We do maintain our policy compliance, as I mentioned before, with our debt to assess value at 1.9%, and our debt to general government operations at 7.3%. The Schools Operating Fund, as I mentioned earlier, the entirety of the Schools Operating Fund has, is required to be included in our budget. So their total budget is $196.7 million. It is up about 9% compared to fiscal year 21. They are seeing an increase in proposed state funding of approximately $4.3 million. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, we are providing a $3 million increase in local funding. So the total local funding here for operations is $65.3 million. Included in our budget is approximately $442,000 for their rent, for their, for their administrative offices. What this does not include is the $10.4 million in debt service related to school facilities. That's in our debt service budget, and it does not include the capital funding of 3.0, almost $3.6 million for their major systems, repairs, and replacements. We also have our Capital Projects Fund, and this will be the last fund that we'll go into. The total budget here is $60.7 million, and it's up about 9% compared to fiscal year 21. This funds all of the projects, and I've said this a number of times now, all of the projects that were in the approved year one of the CIP. We anticipate about $30 million with the bond issuance to cover these projects, and we are proposing $5.6 million of cash-funded capital to go into the Capital Projects Fund, and that comes out of the general fund. There was a lot of information I threw at you, so I'm going to just kind of do a wrap-up summary here. We are not proposing a real estate tax rate increase in fiscal year 22. We do maintain compliance, and in, in some instances, actually improve our compliance with all of our financial policies. We have provided for additional funding of $3 million for school operations, which fully funds the requests that they submitted, which the school board submitted to us. We are addressing some employee compensation and critical personnel resources within the city, divisions and departments, by adding 47 new positions, of which 25 are for new facilities, and the remaining are to address service levels and to provide effective and efficient services to our, our citizens and our internal customers. We're providing for some additional part-time funding for the, for the Bennett Street Recreation Center, as well as additional overtime funding for public safety. We have provided for quality-of-life enhancements related to the CIP in all areas of the city, and we are asking for a $1.50 increase to the monthly stormwater fee to address those stormwater drainage projects as we move forward. And we're proposing a modest increase to the water and sewer rates after we've had no consumption rate increase for the last two years and a slight increase two years ago of the meter service charge. So what are the next steps? Tonight, at your regular session, we will ask you to schedule two public hearings. One is the public hearing to receive comment on the budget itself, and that we're asking to be scheduled for the May 5th City Council Meeting, where we will hold that public hearing and hear public comment. The second public hearing is, is to schedule a public hearing for May 19th related to what the, what the state code considers an effective rate increase due to the increased reassessment. So again, we are not proposing a rate increase, but due to the reassessments, we're required to have this second public hearing. On May 5th, we'll ask that you hold that public hearing on the budget. On May 19th, we'll ask that you hold that public hearing on the effective rate increase due to reassessment, and we're asking for and recommend adoption of the fiscal 22 operating and capital budget and related ordinances at your May 19th City Council Meeting. Before I close, I will put, I mentioned that I was going to talk about where the budget information is available. So the proposed budget, as well as this presentation and all of these slides, are available on the city's website as of now, and citizens can certainly go there and, and look at both this presentation, as well as the budget in its entirety. The full budget document in hard copy will be available for review in the city clerk's office, as well as at the North Suffolk Public Library and the Morgan Memorial Library in downtown. We also will have copies available at the East Suffolk Recreation Center, as well as the Wayleyville Community Center. In addition, if citizens have questions about the budget or would like to talk to a member of budget staff, they are free to call us at 514-4016, or send us an email at budgetofficer@sufficva.us. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Council questions, comments? To the right, to the left, Councilman Fauci?
I'll jump in the frying pan first. Thank you, Ms. Hanson, for your presentation in this magnificent, big binder full of information that your staff and along with our city staff has come together to make this, again, come here before council. You know, I always look at this in a little critical way, because we listen to some constituents out here that are always looking and asking the question of why we're having the utility rate increase on the water rate, and also a little bit on the stormwater. I guess maybe the question is, if the stormwater but fee is really being exercised to the point where it's helping some of the drainage problems that we have in some of these areas, that might be a good thing. However, we hear every year that Suffolk is the highest water rate in Hampton Roads. We get killed, every one of these councilmember up here, get question after question after question about why. And we know this is an enterprise fund, we know where it's going, but it's hard to convince them. You were right, we're very fortunate to not have to raise the rate during the COVID. We found a way to take some cash and move it around to substantiate taking care of the rate. Kind of maybe spoiled some people a little bit, but I would like to explore and make sure that we can, at the 520, if there's any way we can knock that down to 5.4%. We need to look at it real hard and see if we can reduce that down. If it's absolutely not being able to be reduced down, we need a comprehensive answer to the question, so that the people that are airing this, or may read or listen to this process, can have a clear understanding of why we're doing that increase at 5.4. It makes it a little bit easier for the councilmembers up here to be able to talk to these constituents in their communities, to, to give a good quality answer to why we're going up on that rate. We're very fortunate, we don't have a tax rate coming up this year, which is fantastic. I mean, we're probably, not sure if we're going to be one of the few cities that don't have, doesn't have a tax rate. So I guess they can pretty much substantiate, that is lucky that we're not doing that. And with this budget, we, you know, we, we're solid in our, our cities financially. That's one thing we can say, and we can promote. We're very stable in our finances, and we're in compliance with most of what we're doing. So some of the things that are in here, certainly are probably warranted, more so. But just wanted to put my two cents on that. We continue to work hard and find solutions, if there is one. If there isn't a solution, then we give some answers. So right now, I'm going to just take a look at this nice Bible you sent me, and we've had a little pre-presentation on it. And we know where we're going with the schools. The, the schools are, have asked us for 3 million this year, and we're accommodating that 3 million supposedly, unless there's an objection between now and the day we kind of do this budget. So I like to always find a way to do something with the rate, and certainly if somebody's got a better solution, I'd like to hear it. And otherwise, thank you, and I'll leave it at that.
What else? Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Tealyn, thank you very much for the budget. I've seen a number of these over the last few years, and I think this is the most comprehensive that I've seen, and I think it's presented in a way that I think everyone can understand what, what we have to do and what's going on. Sure, we have some rates that, that will have to change and what have you, but I think overall, it's a great budget, and I want to thank you and all the staff, city manager, for presenting this to us, so that we can review and, and see where, where all the, all the money's going and what we're doing. So thank you very much.
Councilman Johnson?
It'd be nice, too. Tealyn, I've been sitting here for six years, and this is the sixth one, and honestly, it's the best presented budget we've ever had. I appreciate what our staff has done for us. I think that what you've asked for is, is probably necessary. Of course, we all have to deal with our constituents as well, but the only thing I would ask, and I'm on the dollar and a half increase, I'm okay with that. And people might yell at me, but I'm okay with the dollar and a half increase, so that we can try to get our stormwater situation under control. And what the public needs to understand is, this might be the beginning, because this is just, there's so much that has to be done down the road. So I don't really have a problem with that. I do have a little bit of a problem with the property values increasing like they have this year in our city, and I haven't said this to you before, but I'm going to say it, and you can, you can yell at me later, but at some point, maybe not this year, because I'm not unhappy with this budget, we're going to have to look at the fact that maybe these property values going up as much as they have, we're going to have to look at a tax decrease at some point, because you just can't keep taking and taking. Eventually, we have to give back a little bit. Not calling for it this year, I'm just putting it out there that for the future, maybe we need to at least consider that, simply because our taxpayers are good people, and they, they deserve a break, too, when they can get a break, and we only, we need what we need. We don't need any more than what we need. But I want to say thank you. Very, very good presentation.
What else? Council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think you gave us a good presentation of all the facts as a flyer, and I will just have to, just sort of piggyback on a couple of things that have been said already, because I know it's coming, about the water rates. And I know you know all of us are going to talk about that before you even put it here. But that is something that we get, continues even before the budgets came out, about the water rates. And I guess we'll have to wait and talk to Mr., to our bond rating people and see how much it's going to affect. I know it's self-sustaining, that the users have to pay for it. So it's going to be hitting us hard with comments from our constituents about the rates going up 5.3%. That's, that's, that's one thing. The other thing that I just have some concern that we're going to be confronted with later on is the SIPSA situation and funding there. And that's something that we probably going to have to be looking at as far as increasing as well. And look like we have right now quite a few things that we're looking to the future that will be increasing. The assessor has done, came in and did a bang-up job. He put a lot of people on notice, and I think that I've had some calls about the rate, assessment rate, how much it went up, and they just had some concern with that. But I know that with what we are getting ready to look at with the schools and building schools, I guess that's, is good, because we're going to have to have fun somewhere to fund those schools when that come about. So I guess that's some, Mr. Assessor, that we'll have to be looking at and thankful, I guess, with you. We don't set assessments, you do that, so, the rates we do. So if it keeps going up, I have to give it to Councilman Johnson. We might have to consider maybe dropping a penny. And I don't know if you dropped the rate, I made the assessment, a penny, I made the rate a penny. I don't know what that would do to the, to the budget, but I think I would like for you just look at it and say, well, if we drop it a penny, go back to 110, this is what will happen. So I would just like to have a little bit of information on that as well. But overall, I think you made a great presentation, and I'm looking forward to hear what others have to say and what the public will be saying about it. Thank you.
Council, any other comments? If not?
Just going to ask one thing. Because we had such a, and we just talked about the assessment rate going up. I don't know if it'd be appropriate or not at a time. I know that the assessor went over some of that, but if he could come one time and maybe later and explain more of how that rate increased for some of these, just an explanation, may help some people in the public, because the rate went up, and I'm not sure they understand why their assessment went up. So I think it'd be a good opportunity to explain that in more depth, if it's possible. I don't know if we could put that on a work session one time, or we can discuss it, but I just think that it would be nice information to put out there.
Anybody else? All right, I'll put my two cents worth in. Once again, I think this is my 11th one of these, and it's done in a very similar format, and Tealyn, you've been involved in the last six or seven. It's, it's constructed very well, easy to read, and I'm sure Will, I just glanced through it, and without getting into particulars, but looking at the, the big picture, of course, the first thing that jumps out is our revenues. Coming off a year of COVID, when you look at the additional revenue that has been generated, and yes, a large part of it, $7 million of it, has been through an increase in assessments. But the assessor is tasked to value property and market value, and anyone who knows what's going on in the real estate market knows that the real estate market has been on fire for the last six months to a year. Values are up, and I do agree with Councilman Johnson as well. I mean, I, I don't fathom that this increase would be at the same rate this upcoming year, but if it is, it's absolutely something we can look at. Of course, it's coming at a good time when you look at the additional needs that we have. You know, just putting another fire station up and manning that fire station. We have a lot of personnel needs. Our city has grown a lot in the last four or five years, and we have added very, very, very few FTEs, and they're badly needed in some of these departments. You know, planning in particular, safety, the assessor's office. I have no objection with the FTEs. I think the city manager has done a good job talking to his department heads and allocating that money appropriately. We've got 62%, 62% of the budget going to schools and safety. So that doesn't leave much for anything else. So the large portion of your taxes is going, 62% to education, 30% to safety. The school budget is up $20 million over the last two years. We do have some reserves. You know, looking at these numbers, if the rating, I don't think anybody needs to make a trip to the rating agencies. I think you just give them the book and let them read it, and it speaks for itself. I mean, all four of our financial guidelines are not only in compliance, but they have improved over the last year. So it speaks volumes for our city as to what we've been able to maintain through this year, the resiliency of our businesses, the resiliency of our citizens. able to maintain through this year, the resiliency of our businesses, the resiliency of our citizens. It, to me, is just amazing. It's a good, you combine that with the property values, and it speaks a lot. I do have, let's see, a couple other small questions. Let's see here. I have one question, and this is a small one. But we mentioned in IT, we mentioned debt service for software. Is that correct?
In the last couple of years, we issued short-term debt for IT items that were in the capital projects, capital improvements plan, as well as to buy new public safety radios. So we replaced, I believe, almost all of the public safety radios in two separate batches over two years. And that added approximately $4 million, four to $5 million worth of debt in the IT fund. And of course, with the IT debt, it's a much shorter term. So when we issue capital projects debt, we issue it over 20 years. When we issue it in the IT fund, it's over five to seven years. And so the debt service on that is, is growing, it's due to the short-term debt issuances that we've done. So it's mostly public safety radios. And off the top of my head, I can't remember what those projects were last year that were in the CIP.
Because I normally think is of software as an operating expense. I don't know. You know, borrow one-
It hasn't, it hasn't been, the only times we would issue debt for software, if it's a large-scale implementation like the CAD system replacement that we're planning on for fiscal '22, it's mostly been the radios and some other IT-type projects, but, but not large-scale software implementations.
Thank you. I look forward to delving into the budget, and I'm sure my counterparts are too. You'll be right on it tonight when you get home. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Hanson. Does anyone have any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Our next order of business will be the proposed fiscal year 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan for the City of Suffolk Community Development Block Grant Program and the Western Tidewater Homes Consortium Home Investment Partnership Grant Program. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The interim Director of Planning and Community Development, Bob Goomis, will provide the report on the action, annual action plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. It's my pleasure to present to you the proposed action plan for this fiscal year coming up, which lays out the proposed allocation of the use of both CBDG, the Community Development Block Grant Funds, as well as our home funds, which are home partnership investment funds for the upcoming fiscal year. The proposed allocations were developed in accordance with both federal regulations and our agreements with HUD, as well as the Adopted Citizen Participation Plan. As a reminder, CBDG and home programs are in support of activities designed to benefit low-to-moderate income persons. Suffolk is an entitlement community, and as such, CBDG funds are specific to the City of Suffolk. In contrast, the home funds are administered by the City of Suffolk as the lead agency on behalf of what is called the Western Tidewater Home Consortium. And this is made up of the City of Suffolk, Franklin, Isle of Wight County, and Southampton County. CBDG and home grant funds are provided and administered through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. For FY 21-22, HUD has allocated $497.35 in CBD grant funds and $408,19,000 in home CBDG activities focus on a wide range of projects, with our emphasis being around support for public service providers, neighborhood improvements, and emergency home repairs. Shown here are the specific allocations that are proposed. Excuse me, we're behind. There we go. Shown here are the specific allocations that are proposed for the FY 21-22 fiscal year in CBDG funds. I'll leave that up for a moment. Home program activities focus on housing needs and repairs and homeownership assistance. Each member organization of the consortium receives equal amounts of funds, whose activities are monitored by the city as the administrator to assure the timely use of those funds. We also provide home funding to the Housing Hampton Roads, which serves as our chodo, our community development, our community housing development organization. Excuse me. Housing Hampton Roads is a subsidiary of Habitat for Humanity and has been our chodo for the past several years. In closing, the development and the adoption of the annual action plan typically mirrors the schedule that Tealyn laid out with regards to the adoption of the operating and capital budget, with proposed public hearing being scheduled for May 5, and then consideration and adoption at your May 19 meeting. No action is required now. However, I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Goomis. Council questions or comments? Thank you very much. Our next order of business will be the Holland Road Widening Project Update. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, as we look at this upcoming presentation, we're at about five minutes of five. I didn't know, we can probably do this in about, I would say, 15 minutes. I didn't know if you want to defer this until maybe a staff report at regular session or proceed with the presentation at this time.
15 minutes, we're probably okay now if it meets your approval?
Yes.
Are you okay now?
Yes, I just want to make sure that we left you enough time for closed session. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, of course, the notice to proceed has been issued for the Holland Road Route 58 Widening Project about a week ago. With that, the Director of Public Works, LJ Hanson, will provide an overview of the upcoming work and the schedule. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. It is my extreme pleasure to be able to present this item to you this afternoon. This is a project we've had in the works for a very long time. In fact, I included this first slide because this is kind of indicative of the western end of the property, of the project at the point that we started this project. This is where the center point, no longer center point, now EQUIS Development exists today. When we started this project, that's what it looked like. Well over 10 years in the, in the making. This is easily the biggest capital improvement project the City of Suffolk has ever undertaken. And as the manager stated, we are underway. We are definitely going to start to see a lot of activity in this corridor. Just for virtue of fairness, I also included a picture of the eastern end. This is right at the approach to the, to the bypass around, around downtown. So where we are today, we have, utility relocations are ongoing. They're wrapping up. They should be, they should be concluding within the next 30 to 60 days. Our contract with, the contractor allows for us to do a little bit of that wrap-up work, so they'll be operating in the same corridor. But again, we've, we've been engaged with our contractor, making sure that everybody has the ability to work where they need to. And I'll give a little bit more information on that. The contract itself is complete. We've routed it through all of our state and federal agencies. We have given notice to proceed. That notice to proceed is already in effect. So equipment is, is onsite, and the contractor is making preparations at this point to begin in earnest. We are going to definitely see a lot of activity kicking off in the next 30 days. A little bit more about the contract. The construction estimate for the work that is underway is $44.8 million. The contract award came in at $43.3 million. So I would say that our engineer did a very good job on the estimate. While we came in underbid, $1.5 million on a project of this size can get consumed. There are, this is a large project. It's going to span over four years. We are not exactly comfortable with the amount of, of window that we have available here. There are, of course, we have contingency monies built in. We have some other funds that are in place. However, I just would, I would caution city council that we have maxed out all of our funding sources from the state and federal agencies. We are underbid. We've done, we've done what we can do to this point. But we do know that there's still a long road ahead of us. And so we will be keeping you appraised with the budget as we move forward. Curtis Contracting had the winning bid. So Curtis Contracting is the prime contractor on this, on this project. But they are by no means the only contractor. They will have a number of subcontractors on the project. They will have a number of subcontractors on the project. In order to manage a project of this size, the Department of Public Works is engaged with two other engineering firms to make sure that we're, that we're doing everything we can do to be efficient in moving the project forward, that we're being responsive to the requirements that we have under the various grants that are, that were administered for these projects. And we've implied, we've employed, rather, the Alpha Corporation as a project construction management. So they will be actually the construction managers onsite. Now, we have staff that are overseeing them, but they are the project construction management. They're going to make sure that all of our invoices are properly accounted for, that we're paying the right amounts, that we're doing the things that we're required to do so that we make sure that we stay in compliance with the laws and regulations under which we've, we've been given these grants. On top of which, we've hired another firm, AMT, to be the construction inspectors. And they're going to make sure that everything, again, large-scale project, we don't have enough inspectors in the City of Suffolk to do all of the work that we're doing and stay on top of this project. So we've employed outside assistants. I tell you that because it's important that you know that we take this project very seriously. It's a very large-scale project. It is a project that we feel adequately prepared for. We've been looking at this for a number of years, and we've, we've partnered with good partners to make sure that we stay on track, keep the project moving, keep it on budget, and do the things that we need to do to make sure that it's a successful project. A little bit about the project. It's broken up into four phases. The first phase, obviously, is the one we'll start with, and it lasts about six to nine months. And that's where we're going to see work starting on the north side of the road. We're going to construct two additional lanes. We're going to call them temporary, but they are actually going to be within the roadway boundaries. They just will not be finished lanes initially. And this is going to allow us to be able to shift traffic and be able to keep two lanes of traffic in both directions open for the duration of the project. So Phase Two, then, is, we'll have shifted the westbound traffic to the temporary pavement, and eastbound will shift over to the other side of the road. That'll allow us to work on the south side. And, and, and that's the order by which this project is going to move. We're going to shift to, we're going to build lanes. We're going to shift traffic to that to make sure that we can maintain a complete and thorough movement of traffic. And as you look at the schedule here, you have about six to nine months in Phase One, about a year in Phase Two, about 18 months in Phase Three. And that's where we have a lot of curb and gutter work that's going on. And, and it just takes a lot of finish work. On top of which, then we have to start shifting traffic back. And then, obviously, the last one, their Phase Four, lasts about nine months. Again, the total estimated time of construction is 45 months. We're very excited because we're able to kick off in spring, meaning we're going to get good summertime months to get us started. We're not trying to, to start off in a wet, a wet climate. That makes all the difference in the world in how we're doing the construction. I wanted to give you a little bit of a, I thought this was going to be an up-to-date picture. This is about a week and a half old, but actually, things have already changed in that short amount of time. This is at Manning Bridge, aiming westbound from, from one of the city's drones. I wanted to point out, using this picture, that there's actually four projects going on in this corridor at this time. And, and that coordination is also really important with what we're doing. We have, of course, the Holland Road Project, which is what we call the project as a whole. A subset of that project, though, is the Manning Bridge Intersection Project. So when you looked at CIP, when you approved CIP, you noticed that there were two different projects. They're funded slightly different. They're both under contract from the prime contract, but we have to keep them separate. And that's another part of why we have our contractors, to make sure that, that the work that we're doing is kept separate. We also have private development, which is what we call the Road A Improvements, which is at the EQUIS Development. That work is already ongoing. That's where we are seeing the barrels on the western edge of the property. That's to construct this road, which goes into the, the building that is under construction right there. So as, as we look at this, they're building a road to serve a brand-new facility, which they're trying to get open at the same time that we're trying to build a road. Ultimately, the intersection that is there is about three to four feet lower today than what it will be at the final conclusion of the project. So you can imagine the level of coordination. We're trying to build these, these roads, dealing with the fact that we have cars going through it all, all the time, knowing that we have to, to build it up. And it, it all has to be timed. And there, and there will be hiccups. We know there will be hiccups. But, but it is our intent to continue to work through those. And to that end, I just wanted to talk about some of the items that we have really stressed with our contractors, that we've stressed with the subcontractors, and where our minds are as we look forward to this project. Number one, not number one, but among the number one priorities we have, is maintenance of traffic. That's really important to us. You've heard me say a number of times, it's our goal to keep two lanes of traffic in both directions open at all time. We recognize that this is the heart of, of an economic engine for the community of Suffolk. It's our desire to make sure that traffic can not only flow through this area, but that the businesses can be served. Businesses are open along this corridor. We know they're open. We intend to do everything we can to facilitate the successful operation of those businesses throughout the course of this, this project. We want to make sure that we have limited closures or delays. There will be times that we're going to have to close a lane. There will be times that we'll have some, some minor interruptions. But we, it's our intent to do everything we can to minimize those opportunities, to put them into weekends if, if necessary, if it's going to be something that we think to be truly impactful, or if possible, in the evening. But there is a residential component along this corridor, so we want to be cautious and, and considerate of that as well. Community communications, really important. For a project of this size, we recognize the community has a lot of questions. We recognize that you're going to get some of those questions. It's, it's our intent to have community meetings at key points. That may be town hall. It may be updates through our media, social media, council briefs. It's our intent to keep citizens up to date with what's going on, especially as we get too close to those periods where we're shifting traffic. You're going to see a change in the condition that exists out there. So if we're shifting traffic to the northbound, or to the north lanes, or if we're at each of those phase points, we'll definitely want to let you know what's coming up well in advance. And then the last item that I have on here, I can't stress enough. I put it last because I really want it to be the thing that stays in our mind is safety. I mentioned that there's four projects that are, that are at play here, and I actually skipped the last, the last one, which is Pump Station 24. It's a, it's a utility pump station project that's located on the corridor, that they're also doing work at the same time. So there are, again, four projects in here. Lot of, a lot of construction workers on an already very busy, very crowded, very risky corridor. And so we have partnered with Public Safety. We've asked their assistance to help us monitor this corridor, to assist us in monitoring speeds, and, and, and they have agreed to do so. We've, we're not exactly sure if changes are going to be required. For instance, it may require a change in the speed limit. We don't know that yet until we have the opportunity to see how well people are obeying what we have. We'd like to keep it at the existing speed, because changing the speed limit will increase congestion. Increasing congestion causes other problems. So we'd like to keep it at the current posted 45 mile an hour speed limit. We may be looking at high-fine speeds. But the intent is to continue to move traffic through the corridor safely. And that's what we really want to do. And to that end, what we really ask is that people stay alert. Pay attention as you're moving through this corridor. Please be aware that it's, it's about your safety as the traveling public, but it's also about the safety of the men, women, that are doing the work on the road out there. With that, I would ask if you have any questions, if you have any special concerns that you'd ask us to, to be mindful of. Robert Lewis will be the Acting Director of Public Works effective tomorrow, and he's available as well. So if you have any questions- available as well, so if you have any questions, we're certainly available.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for all your hard work in your department. Like you said, this is a long time coming. It's just been a huge, huge project, and to get to this point now is really the culmination of a lot, a lot of work from a lot, a lot of people. Council, questions? Councilman Fawcett?
Okay, I just want to say thanks for the presentation. That is a big undertaking that we're going through for that corridor, which I think my colleague here is going to speak a little on the bad and the need for that. The one thing you can expect, you don't have to ride it, but a couple of times, the truck traffic coming through there is enormous. So I would expect the police department should be reared up and ready to go because you're going to have, you're going to have some crashes there. We have it on a normal day, so just going through the construction is really going to be a challenge, but I'm thanking you for bringing it forward. It's great. It's great to see some of these road projects really come into life, and that one's been a long time. Like you said, that's been a number of years. So if we can just bear with it for a few months, which is 48 months, but we'll see an end to the tunnel, the light the end of the tunnel, so thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
I'll be brief too, LJ. I'm sure we'll be talking a lot as we move forward here, since that's my borough. I'm glad to hear you talk about the signage and the speed limit because it is one of my major concerns. We need to make sure that we address this well before you get to where it begins, maybe up toward Loomis Road, because these trucks are literally, you know what they're doing, they're flying, and the cars. So we need to make sure people are aware, and I'm glad you're at least considering reducing the speed limit, probably to Loomis, or at least far enough back where they're slowed down. And then my other question is, are you going to begin on which end of the road? Have we made that decision yet?
We did have a conversation with the contractor. They're intending to start on the western edge. So on the northbound side of the road, which would be the westbound lanes on the western edge of the project, and in all honesty, Councilman, they will have that whole corridor disrupted at some point, but the intent is, during mobilization, mobilization requires different parties coming in. It would be, it's the wisest choice is for us to start on the western edge because there's less development in that area. We wouldn't want to start on the eastern edge because there's, because it's so heavily developed, and it would take us, we want to minimize the disruption to the eastern edge where all the businesses.
And I agree 100%. My point being said, though, is with what's going on on the western edge right now with this stoplight going in for the industrial park, that's where they'll start. So all of that will be, it's going to be a mess there right away, pretty quick, because it's a mess right now, but that's where you're talking about starting, correct?
They're going to start on that end, but as, again, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, everything on the northbound side is going to be disturbed.
Right.
I would say within 30 to 60 days, we'll see it all along.
We're excited to get it started, I'll be honest with you. Four years is a long time, so let's get this thing rolling. I just want to make sure that we have in place key people that the city, that residents can talk to, and we really, it needs to be a lot of information put out as we go along, because this is four years of, these people are going to be dealing with four years, and there's a lot of traffic coming from the west that are going to be affected, and, but thank you, I'm ready for it to get rolling too, and I'm more than happy to work with anybody, but my main concern is the safety of the people that live on that road and keeping the traffic flowing. So, but thank you. We'll talk more.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. LJ, thank you for all you've done to make this come about and your team and have, the last time that road was really worked on was 1966, I believe, when it was changed from single road to a double road. And so from '66 to now has been quite a time, so I think it's due, and again, I think the best thing to do is to have as much communication to the public as you can during this time. It will be some delays, always has been, but it will, in the long run, it'll really work out for us, so I thank y'all for all your effort and what y'all are doing. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Comments? All right. Thank you very much, LJ. Appreciate it. That concludes our work session. We will reconvene at 6:00 PM.
Excuse me?
Got to have a close session.
Motion motion.
We got a motion for a close session.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, Section 8 and A1.
Madam Clerk, thanks for keeping me straight.
Consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Planning Council, the Virginia Municipal League Policy Committees, the Western Tidewater Water Authority, and the Wetlands Board.
Motion is presented, council. Got a motion from Councilman Fawcett, and a second from Councilman Williams. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Just before you call the roll, Mayor, I just want to ask William a question on the close session, on the schools. We're not doing it? Okay, all right, it was on, okay, full, okay, all right, that's good, thank you.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00.